Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Toby?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detschel?
Here.
Mr. Heather? Mr. Tiesworth?
Here.
Start with our mission statement. The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And we need a mission in a second to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Still moved. Second.
Sis five to zero. We have a student achievement liaison appointment.
Yes, I do. It's a nice meeting I have from Taylor Elementary. They had a great turnout for their K-1 family event on January 10th. They're revisiting for mid-year check. What words and writing skills should the students know at this point? What math skills should they have at this point? What social skills have they been working on and the students should understand? They also had family crafts and some snacks. Colrain Middle School, these students have demonstrated what it means to be a Cardinal. Cardinal being caring, accountable, respectful, dynamic, and safe. These students earned a special breakfast on January 20th. Christopher Ziger, Laney Kobe, Ellen A. Berger, Kristen Weiner, Morgan Byrne, Eli Bogan, Fulton Carter, Danaya Britton, Brooke Schlossinger, Olivia Mitchell, Trinity Dyke, Joe Perez-Agalon, Ricky Williams, Sebastian DeBoer, Brineah England, Monty Butts, Ash Rye, Madison Myers, Alexis Spradlin, Brittany Perez-Miranda. Colrain Elementary, congratulations to all four of our Colrain Elementary reflection entries. All four moved up from regional to state competition. These individuals were Audrey Hustler, Emma Dombrowski, Kennedy Andrews, and Deepish Shapigane. A huge thank you goes out to Colrain Elementary students who participated in the PTA Founder's Day penny wars. Money was donated to the victims of the Kentucky flood. Colrain Elementary raised $924.70. Fourth grade raised the most money with fifth grade finishing in second. Winning grade levels won a pizza party as well as an ice cream party. At Northwest High School, please help us to congratulate our Students of the Month. Mitchell Graves, 12th grade. Mitchell has consistently modeled how to behave the night way throughout the year and encourages his peers to do the same. Becky Herrera, 10th grade. Becky is extremely responsible, respectful, and friendly. That's what I have.
Awesome. Thank you. Any legislative update, Chris?
Just one thing, Nicole. The Ohio Legislature is back in session and they've reintroduced the bill to water down the authority, power, discretion of the state school board. So that's in committee. It's going to take a little while to get through the House and the Senate, but I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Do we have a Butler Tech update for today?
Yeah. I had said at the last meeting about having one of our meetings out at the Natural Science Center, the new building out there, and just wanted to see what the other board members, what's a good time or if you guys have a specific, you know, in February or March, we can decide and go just...
You were going to check and see maybe next time we talk to them about a date.
Yeah, I don't have the dates yet, so I'll get those and just I'll send them out to you guys to see what works. Spring, summer?
Okay, yeah, because I'd like to do it before they...
Close down?
Close down for the, you know...
You want it natural science?
Yeah, yeah, so...
We did that at the old old legislature's gate, didn't we?
Yeah.
The Hummels and all that.
Yeah, yeah, and then we just have it, it's a new facility, just opened in October. So it's a pretty, pretty cool building.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, because they'll want, you know, we come out a half hour beforehand or 40 minutes beforehand and give a tour of the place and that, so it's...
Okay, yeah.
So just, yeah, check your calendars and see what date you want and then let me know and then, I mean, I call them up and schedule it, so nothing to do. Got it?
Thanks.
Yeah, that's it.
Do we have any reports? And no community members?
All right, so tonight for our consent items, we'll start with community coaches.
We seek your approval for the following: three resignations, one retirement date revision, three initial appointments, two change in status, and various supplemental items.
We have several donations tonight. Gail Molti and Dale Beck donation to create a scholarship fund. The Matthew Mangene Jr. Foundation to Northwest High School for an AED for their away events. Side-by-side donation of books to Taylor Elementary and Monford Heights Elementary. Donation for blessing bags from the following: Colrain Township Fire Department, Thriven, various community members, Susan Bunty, Colrain Elementary School, and P&amp;S Restaurant. We also have some vendor contracts for Title I services, interpreter services, music contracts, behavior health support, and special education.
From the curriculum office, we're seeking your approval for a state/out-of-state field trip for the Colrain Winter Winds to compete in Indiana on Saturday, March 4th. No school will be missed as a result.
The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
Still moved. Second.
All right, motion to second. Any discussion on those items?
Appreciate all the donations from the, you know, Gail and Dale and Side-by-Side, P&amp;S, Colrain Township, and these. Seems like Gail and Dale and Side-by-Side is on our agenda every month or something, so really appreciate what they do for the community and the school district.
Yeah, Gail is a board member years ago.
Right.
Transportation, what are we, what are we looking at? Are we any closer to, I know we had 10 on Friday, that's just...
Yeah, we had 10 routes canceled on Friday.
Yeah.
We still have some open routes that still need to be filled. And based on the number of call-offs that we've had, we've had to cancel additional routes in addition to the ones we posted on Friday. So we're still monitoring that. We're still recruiting, hiring. Do you have anything on that?
Have we thought about, I know combining, you know, we've combined routes and I know today, I talked to my driver who said, you know, she was doing double routes and everybody from the office is driving. So, you know, really appreciate their efforts. Thought about either pushing back a start time of a couple of schools by a few minutes just to allow those routes to be picked up or having any kind of outside contractors come in and help drive buses? Or what else have we looked at? I just, getting kids to school, to me, this is an epidemic. I think it has to be a priority.
Chris, you've been working, you want to talk about the different options you guys have been looking at and why some of those things may or may not be an option?
Yeah, there's several things we're looking at. We did collapse three routes into one, so we're always looking at that. But a lot of it we're looking at for next year, creating more efficiencies, trying to get our numbers up. It's just trying to find that balance of getting our numbers up on our buses and not getting too many and then all of a sudden we have an influx of riders. So then we're rerouting again. Yeah, the biggest thing is just trying to, trying to hire new people and retain the good drivers that we have.
And we're having a lot of sickness with our drivers?
We've had a lot of illness, like last-minute call-offs. The last-minute call-offs are the ones that cause the additional cancellations the morning of. But we have looked at the timing. We have three tiers that we run, so the drivers run three different routes in each segment of the morning, the afternoon. And adjusting the times would mean creating a fourth tier, which would extend, like we'd have to change start times by about an hour, because every route is about 45 minutes, so you can't change it just by 10 or 15 minutes either way. The time to run the full route requires an additional tier. So it'd be pushing some of our start times about 45 minutes earlier or 45 minutes later.
I have two questions, one for you, Chris, and one for you, Darryl. Chris, how many drivers do we have and how many should we, do we need for a full complement of bus drivers?
We started out this year with 66 routes and we had just enough drivers to cover every route. We usually try to carry anywhere from eight to 10 sub-drivers, full-time sub-drivers. So they would come in every day for a minimum of two hours, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. And right now, we're, we're down to about 63 routes. We're still short three drivers and as quick as we're getting subs in, they're getting full-time routes. So we're quickly revolving them in as soon as we can.
Okay, and then the second question, thank you, Chris. Second question, the call-offs, I've worked places where sometimes when people have to talk to, we talked about the call-offs at some of the schools, on Fridays especially, being kind of high. Is there any way we could make it where it's, there's a little more responsibility when you call off versus maybe just going into a portal or however we do it?
The last-minute call-offs do require reaching out to supervisor administrator. So there is some accountability there for those call-offs.
But it doesn't?
Still having absenteeism.
And typically, Chris, when you're getting those type call-offs, they're coming in at, you know, 5:45, 5:30, and we've got buses that leave a lot at 6 o'clock. So the transportation department is really scrambling to try to find ways to cover those routes.
And a lot of times that's where they're splitting routes in the afternoon where kids might be coming home on a different bus because they've had to split. And some of them are doing double runs where they're trying to combine two routes into one. So there's, they do a lot of creative things to try to minimize the number of route cancellations we have. And it's just been on an uphill battle all year.
Are there companies that outsource maybe subs or any, anything like that?
No, there's busing companies like the First Students and the Petermans out there. But no, they don't provide sub-services. You know, actually, a lot of the schools, a lot of the schools that are using those services are struggling just like we are.
Sure, yeah, yeah. It's not unique to us.
Even if you wanted the contract, the drivers aren't there to contract with, are they?
We went through that. We did it out several teen years ago. Downside, you saved money, but you didn't know who you were, who was driving the kids. They were screening them and not us, and we opted out to go.
Well, kudos to those that are picking up all the extra routes and that, because it's...
It does create a lot of stress on our current drivers because they're driving routes that they're not familiar with or picking up kids that they don't know. And our drivers really value and pride themselves on knowing the kids on their routes, having a relationship with the kids, knowing the families. So it does create stress on them as well to be spread this thin. And it's not fun for them to be on unfamiliar routes and not know day-to-day if theirs is being canceled and split or, so it creates a lot of stress in the department as well.
Yeah. I don't know, maybe could we put a communication out just letting the district know of this and also even to the percolial parents, because I hear, a lot of the percolial parents have issue with it too. And I just think if we could communicate, here's, here's why and here's what we're dealing with, just so people, I mean, people look at it and they immediately say, oh, they're just, they're not trying hard enough, they're just canceling our routes. And it's just not true. I just, if there's some way we could get ahead and...
Yeah, it is definitely not true. Our department has been, divided themselves in 12 different ways to try to figure out ways. So we can definitely work on a communication to go out and just explain the process, the barriers, and actually ask people to help support recruitment. If you know someone who is looking for work, we offer paid training. So we'll pay you to, while you're training, to go through and get the CDL with the bus driver endorsement. And you don't have to drive a full route, you can just drive athletic trips, you can drive a sub. We've got all kinds of options.
Part-time job is turned into a full-time.
Well, thank you guys for that.
Are you looking?
I have a question.
I get feedback, I get feedback from people who work in the district that says the absenteeism is higher than they've ever seen it before.
Well, what's, what do you think is causing that?
Well, that's what I'm getting ready to ask.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, it's not fair to the Brenda's and her teams who put all this time in developing a curriculum when we have people who really can't even educate our students, they're basically babysitting them as subs. And I don't mean that in any level of disrespect. They're just not in front of these kids every single day, so how effective can that be? And then on top of that, if we can't even get them to school, all the effort that they do here on Banning Road is, like, to me, there's a culture problem that you can call off whenever you want. And, and I may be like, really, and I know we can't get into HR and personnel issues in this meeting, but everybody works hard to create an opportunity for, for children. And there's some fundamental things that have to happen for that to happen. And one is getting them here and having qualified, trained people in front of them. And these are the fundamentals of this stuff and it's not, it doesn't seem to be happening as efficiently as it can be. So...
I think it's a cultural thing nationwide. I, I worked for McDonald's for five years as a kid. And I read a story last week about a local McDonald's, and it just blew my mind that it was on a weekend, they couldn't get enough help. So the owner-operator of the McDonald's offered the employees, these are high school kids, $50 an hour to work and then he got covered. That's what it took, $50 an hour to flip burgers and wait on people. And I thought, man, times have changed.
So we continue to monitor. We have a target of 95% attendance for our kids and our staff, and so we continue to monitor that. Our sub-coverage has been getting better. So we used to be between 40 and 50% of being able to get subs to come in and cover vacancies within our buildings. And we can get subs into our buildings easier than we can into transportation because of the licensing piece. And those numbers have been up to closer to 60 percentiles, which is where we would typically on our pre-COVID years run was around 60 to 70% fill rate. So that's starting to kind of get back to a pre-pandemic level. The transportation is just a different issue because of the licensure that's required and the time it takes. So we are continuing to monitor attendance, absenteeism, as well as the other side of it, which is filling the vacancies.
It's this cascading issue, right? So you don't have people, then our teachers aren't getting their planning time, they're not getting this, they're not getting that. And, I mean, it's just, it's just so exponential, the impact. You know, it's not a matter of just pulling one thing out. This thing's like a burr of a carpet, right? You snag it, you'll unwind the whole thing by the time you're done. I don't know what the answer is, but as somebody who is outside kind of looking in at this, I know it's concerning and alarming.
And it's something that we continue to monitor, look at, and try to strategize around. We also, you know, value our staff who are here because whether it's a teacher who is covering during their plan belt or an assistant who is picking up the slack for monitoring more kids than they normally do, all of our staff do a great job of making sure that the student experience is as seamless as possible in spite of what holes and vacancies might be there.
And I say that, I appreciate everybody doing what they do. You know, you, you have your tried and tested folks that are here every day, they don't miss for nothing. You know, they're the shock absorbers in the equation.
And it is stressful for them too, because they're absorbing a lot of stress.
Yeah, and I'm very thankful for our subs that allow opportunities for our teachers that are in the building. I mean, it, it's kind of the livelihood right now.
And we moved several years ago to trying to put permanent subs in our buildings so that there are not just consistent subs in the building, but consistent subs who know the routine, the structure, the leadership, the kids. And so we've been trying to build that capacity as well and make sure that there's not just people, but there are people who know our kids and care about that specific environment.
I think that's a great idea, the building subs.
And one final thing, about during Christmas, my street, which is not a bad neighborhood, it's a postal delivery people, I don't think we'd be afraid to work back there. But we only had postal delivery one day out of five. And so I asked the letter carrier, when I did finally see him, I said, why only one out of five? And his response was, we have hiring fairs every Wednesday.
And seeing if he wanted a postal job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of them out there.
It's, it's a systemic problem outside of our organization, but we're focused on solutions that will support our kids and our staff.
Well, thanks, yeah, if we, if we could get some communication out, maybe the community on that. Thank you. Sis five to zero.
Good evening. First, we need to dispense with reading of and approve the organizational meeting, the tax budget hearing, and the regular meeting minutes from January 9th. We have our financial report for the month of December. Our all-funds balance was $67.5 million. Our general fund unreserved balance is $33.2 million. And this is the lowest point it's been in for the fiscal year. Remember, we collect our, majority of our revenue in July and August and again in January and February. So as we dip down into December, it's the low cash balance point. Our revenues were $47.9 million year-to-date, we're at 48% for the fiscal year. And our expenditures were $45 million, we're at 47%. So we're halfway through the year and we're hovering right at 47, 48% of our target. But our revenues increased from month to month 2%, and our expenditures increased month to month 9%. So again, that shows you, our revenue comes in spurts, you know, two times a year, the majority of it, and our expenditures are pretty consistent month to month. Our investment weighted average return was 3.02%. And our list of monthly bills, where we had our routine monthly bills, as well as we had some instructional interactive displays at Colrain Elementary and Monford Heights. We had some printing services, our Waycross contract, and some auxiliary and grant fund payments. And then I'd like to also remind everybody that the ex-biennial budget starts, the governor should present that February 1st. And while our community could help by letting our legislators know that they could fully fund the Fair School Funding Plan, right now it is only funded at 33%. So we're receiving 33% of the 25% of the funding plan for basic education. That is the state's portion. As well as the inputs that they use to calculate the cost of basic education are based on 2018 costs, and it's 2023, and we know with inflation, costs have risen. So it would, we need to be able to let our legislators know and support fully funding the plan as well as increasing the inputs' current costs. We also have a then-andnow, two then-and-now certifications. One is for software and one is for nursing services from the beginning of the school year, which is, was a misunder, confusion in the timing of a contract, why that occurred. And then finally, we have to ask you to accept the two donations that you accepted tonight, approve the funds, put them in, and then appropriate to spend them for the AED and the scholarship. With that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the fiscal consent item as listed.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Just that the state has that record-breaking three-day fund. Just a comment.
Thanks, Amy. Sis five to zero.
All right, so I just have a couple of quick things that are thematically related. So we obviously yesterday had a little bit of snow and our maintenance department and our custodians did an amazing job coming in Sunday evening and starting the clearing of our lots and clearing the sidewalks and our lots, and our sidewalks looked amazing this morning. But I really appreciate the work that they do to make sure that we can continue to have school and operate. And though that was amazing that they not only did it, but did it that quickly and that well. So we appreciate them. And I've been hearing from all over the district today that there's this little maybe something coming on Wednesday, snow. And so a lot of conversation, a lot of fun around predicting what snow might come and whether it would be a snow day. And so just to put it out there that, you know, if we do, if we do have a snow day, it's still a couple of days away, we know the reliability of weather forecasters. If it is a snow day or any day in the future where we have a snow day, it is a snow day. We're not doing remote learning days. So I just want to be very clear.
And that's district-wide, not building?
That's district-wide. So if we have an event where we have to cancel school, it will not be a remote learning day. We would hope that our kids, our families, and our big kids, our staff, would be able to go out, enjoy the weather in whatever way they do, whether it's sledding, building a snowman, sitting with some hot chocolate, reading a book. Great days to read books. They will be snow days, just to clarify that. And we'll keep our, keep our eye on the forecast.
I'm kind of thankful that it happened on Sunday. Timing-wise, the snow that fell, if it had happened today, we would have buses on the road before first flakes, right? And it came down so hard and heavy that...
It's, Chris and I have a lot of 4:00 AM conversations and they are stressful conversations to make sure that we're making the right decision to keep everyone safe. So, yeah, so we may be talking bright and early on Wednesday morning. According to some of the staff I talked to today, they're planning for it, so we'll see.
Thank you. Board member comments, please?
Just to kind of, I'll tell you what Darryl said. I tend to walk my dog out our pools, just to kind of, I'm not sure why I was out last night, I was. And there was in the dark shadows on the steps going from Monford Heights Elementary and the sands, a figure sweeping those steps at 8:00 last night. I was going to go over and thinking, but it was too cold. Walked that far.
Maybe he's watching.
But they were out and it looked good.
Maybe.
It was all sloppy and everything, so I just didn't want to walk that far. Yes, they, they were out. That's it.
I don't have anything.
I don't really have anything school-wide to add, but I can't go without saying a hoo-dee.
That's right.
I wanted to congratulate, we had a couple track athletes from Northwest, Deja and Malakai. I wanted to congratulate, we had a couple track athletes from Northwest, Deja and Malachi, who performed really well at the Mount St. Joe Indoor Track Event. And then also our show cards at Colrain High School, one of their performances was canceled. Hopefully they can get that rescheduled, I'm not sure what their plans are for that, but I know they were disappointed yesterday. And then just, yeah, I thank everyone that helped clean up the schools yesterday, and good luck to all of our winter athletes as they compete towards the end of their season and so, and hoo day. Thank you. Mission in a second to adjourn?
To move.
Second.